You know, you're a gentleman.
Give us one second Nancy. Nancy, give us one second so we can get on air.
That's right, okay.
Give us... Okay Nancy, we're on.
Okay. It is Wednesday, August 12th, 2020. I am Nancy O'Kelly, President of the Rialto USV Board of Education, and I am calling this meeting to get, uh, to order at 6:33 PM. Uh, first thing we have is comments on closed session agenda items. Any person wishing to speak on any item on the closed session agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have Ms. Dr. Avila?
Uh, we do not.
Okay. Uh, then can I have a motion to move into closed session?
So move.
Okay, Martinez, and can I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Ayala. Okay, vote by board members. Uh, for me it's, uh, yes or an aye for Ms. Walker? Aye. Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montez?
Aye.
Okay, so we are moving into closed session at 6:34 PM.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Kelly, we're back on.
Okay. Can I have a call? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, thing we need to do is adjourn closed session. Can I have a motion to adjourn closed session?
Martinez?
Can I have a second?
Second, Ayala?
All right. And vote by board members. For me, it's an aye. And Miss Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Did you hear me? Aye, Martinez.
Loud and clear.
I think we lost her. The connection dropped my car earlier, and I just called back.
Okay, if we can just get for a second.
Yeah, give her time to call back.
Yeah.
So what about those Dodgers?
How about those new Christmas people?
Okay, okay.
I somehow lost the call.
You made a wrong turn.
I'm sorry, what?
No, don't listen to me. Go ahead. Just trying to entertain myself.
Okay, we're taking a vote to adjourn closed session. Um, for me, it's an aye. For Miss Walker? Miss Walker, we're... Okay. Uh, Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
And Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay. Uh... 7:05 PM. Okay. Open session has reconvened at 7:05 PM. Uh, we're starting with the pledge of allegiance, which to avoid confusion, I will say it if everybody else would just stand and, uh, show respect. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution of America, with the oath of office of Attorney General. Okay, do we have a report as of closed session?
Yes, we do. We have a couple. Uh, the first states, "I would like to take this opportunity to thank Nutrition Services for their commendable effort in helping students and their families. Ms. Fassad, Ms. Christina, and their team did an excellent job yesterday distributing food to the community. Their work is so important for our students and community to thrive. Sincerely, uh, Mahin John Mohammed," a community member. Next, "Just wanted to give RUSD Nutrition Services a shout out. I received lunch from my kids throughout the summer."
That's grand, boys. Somebody needs to leave their mic.
Okay. Let me start over with this one. So this one states, "Just wanted to give RUSD Nutrition Services a shout out. I received lunch from my kids throughout the summer and really appreciated the boxed food. All of the workers, volunteers, and even the custodians were always super nice and friendly. Thank you, Paola Hernandez." And this one states, "Good afternoon. I just wanted to give a huge thank you to Nutrition Services as a parent and a district employee I know first and how this pandemic has affected struggling families. Thank you so much for offering breakfast and lunch to our students. I know those meals were a lifesaver, especially at a time when many parents did not have where... did not know where their next meal would come from. And once again, thank you Nutrition Services." And this one comes from... it just has the initial C and then Pinedo. And that is all we have for comments not on the agenda.
Do we have any?
I'm sorry, Mrs. Kelly, can you repeat?
We moved on to public comments on agenda items. Do we have any?
No comments on the agenda.
Okay. Now we move on to comments from, uh, Association Executive Board members, starting with REA. Any comments?
Uh, yes, we have comments. It says, "Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening during our first week of distance learning in Rialto. The challenges are many, and our educators are doing their absolute best to rise to the occasion. As we progress through this new model of education, I ask that you understand the positives, the pitfalls, and the improvements which will need to be made in the model we are using for distance learning. As we become more immersed in instructional delivery, inevitably there will be things that need adjusting and more training offered. I do not want district admin to become intransigent to our educator suggestions on what is best for their students and families. Working collaboratively, we can improve our practices and do what is right for the Rialto community and educators who serve it. To be sure, the three most important components of this school year will be patience, flexibility, and grace. Thank you for your time, and thank you to the educators, students, and their families for all of their work this week. Respectfully, Lisa Limber."
Okay, we move on. California School Employees Association, CSCEA, any comments?
Uh, yes, we have some. It says, "Good evening, Rialto Unified Family. Tonight, I want to share with all of you the general feel of the classified staff. I have spoken to many members and continue to receive more emails than I can reply to about the overall safety in our workplace. There are still many sites without protective shields for public areas. I know maintenance services is working to correct this, but I must ask that this is placed as a top priority. I also want to thank Dan Destrolo for all he has done to ensure that all sites had their PPE as fast as possible as staff returned to work in July. There are issues with not enough manpower to handle the influx of calls and visits from parents and teachers needing assistance with online classes. Tech support is spread thin. Many clerical and custodial employees don't have the luxury of taking a day or two for COVID relief. We realize many issues need to be worked out. I also want to let the school board know Chapter 203 will be meeting via Zoom tomorrow evening to discuss school board member... school board endorsements. Uh, we will... we will decide on a date for a virtual forum where members can ask questions of candidates. Keep an eye out for an invite as I will be sending it out to you all this weekend by email. As we return to work in a virtual environment, classified staff are working hard to address new challenges each and every day. We are dedicated to supporting the education process for all. Thank you and good evening, Chris Cardasco."
Okay. How about Communication Workers of America? Are there any comments?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Good evening, honorable members of the RUSD School Board. On behalf of the guest teachers of the Rialto Unified School District, we look forward to a continued partnership effort to educate the students of the Rialto community for the 2020-2021 school year. We recognize that our partnership will require that we do our work differently as we cope with an unprecedented worldwide event, and we look forward to acquiring the additional skills to meet the challenges that..."
So what about those Dodgers?
How about those new Christmas people?
Okay, okay.
Uh, we're back, we're back.
I somehow lost the call.
You made a, you made a wrong turn.
I'm sorry, what?
No, don't, don't listen to me. Go ahead.
Uh, okay. We're taking a vote to adjourn closed session. Um, for me, it's an aye for Ms. Walker. Ms. Walker, we're, okay. Uh, Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
And Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, seven oh five P M. Okay, open session has reconvened at seven oh five P M. Uh, we're starting with the pledge of allegiance, which to avoid confusion, I will say it if everybody else would just stand and, uh, show respect. My pledge of allegiance is that I am the United States of America and true to the Constitution, law, and justice, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, do we have a report as of closed session?
Yes, we do. First, the Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Noel Montgomery, Applied Behavior Analyst Specialist. The roll call vote was unanimous. The Board of Education accepted the administrative appointment of Stephanie Finney, Applied Behavior Analyst Specialist. The roll call vote was unanimous. And the Board of Education took action to accept the unpaid five-day suspension of certificated employee number two, five, one, one, three, one, zero. The roll call vote was unanimous, and that is all we have.
Okay. Next is to adopt the agenda. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Martinez?
Can I have a second? All right. And vote by board members. For me, it's an aye for Ms. Walker.
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
You lost her again.
No, I'm here.
Oh, okay.
Did we lose Mr. Montes?
Uh, aye.
Okay. All right. Uh, next section, presentations, we have none. We move on to comments, public comments from the floor. At this time, any person wishing to speak on any item not on the agenda will be granted three minutes. Do we have any, Dr. Avila?
Yes, we do. We have a couple. Uh, the first, uh, states, I would like to take this opportunity to thank Nutrition Services for their commendable effort in helping students and their families. Ms. Fassad, Ms. Christina, and their team did an excellent job yesterday distributing food to the community. Their work is so important for our students and community to thrive. Sincerely, uh, Mahin John Mohammed, a community member. Next, uh, just wanted to give our U S D Nutrition Services a shout out. I received lunch from my kids throughout, throughout the summer.
That's grand, boys. Somebody needs to leave their mic.
Okay, let me start over with this one. So this one states, just wanted to give our U S D nutritional services a shout out. I received lunch from my kids throughout the summer and really appreciated the boxed food. All of the workers, volunteers, and even the custodians were always super nice and friendly. Thank you, Paola Hernandez. And this one states, good afternoon, I just wanted to give a huge thank you to Nutrition Services. As a parent and a district employee, I know firsthand how this pandemic has affected struggling families. Thank you so much for offering breakfast and lunch to our students. I know those meals were a lifesaver, especially at a time when many parents did not have where, did not know where their next meal would come from. And once again, thank you Nutrition Services. And this one comes from, it just has the initial C and then Pinedo. And that is all we have for comments not on the agenda.
Do we have any?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kelly, can you repeat?
We're, we're, we moved on to public comments on agenda items. Do we have any?
Uh, no comments on the agenda.
Okay. Now we move on to comments from, uh, Association Executive Board members, starting with R E A. Any comments?
Uh, yes, we have comments. It says, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening during our first week of distance learning in Rialto. The challenges are many and our educators are doing their absolute best to rise to the occasion. As we progress through this new model of education, I ask that you understand the positives, the pitfalls, and the improvements which will need to be made in the model we are using for distance learning. As we become more immersed in instructional delivery, inevitably there will be things that need adjusting and more training offered. I do not want district admin to become intransigent to our educator's suggestions on what is best for their students and families. Working collaboratively, we can improve our practices and do what is right for the Rialto community and educators who serve it. To be sure, the three most important components of this school year will be patience, flexibility, and grace. Thank you for your time and thank you to the educators, students, and their families for all of their work this week. Respectfully, Lisa Limber.
Okay, we move on. California School Employees Association, C S E A, any comments?
Uh, yes, we have some. It says, good evening, Rialto Unified Family. Tonight, I want to share with all of you the general feel of the classified staff. I have spoken to many members and continue to receive more emails than I can reply to about the overall safety in our workplace. There are still many sites without protective shields for public areas. I know maintenance services is working to correct this, but I must ask that this is placed as a top priority. I also want to thank Dan Destrolo for all he has done to ensure that all sites had their P P E as fast as possible as staff returned to work in July. There are issues with not enough manpower to handle the influx of calls and visits from parents and teachers needing assistance with online classes. Tech support is spread thin, is spread thin. Many clerical and custodial employees don't have the luxury of taking a day or two for COVID relief. We realize many issues need to be worked out. I also want to let the school board know, Chapter two zero three will be meeting via Zoom tomorrow evening to discuss school board member, school board endorsements. Uh, we will, we will decide on a date for a virtual forum where members can ask questions of candidates. Keep an eye out for an invite as I will be sending it out to you all this weekend by email. As we return to work in a virtual environment, classified staff are working hard to address new challenges each and every day. We are dedicated to supporting the education process for all. Thank you and good evening, Chris Cardasco.
Okay, how about Communication Workers of America? Are there any comments?
Uh, yes, ma'am. Good evening, honorable members of the R U S D, uh, school board. On behalf of the guest teachers of the Rialto Unified School District, we look forward to a continued partnership effort to educate the students of the Rialto community for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. We recognize that our partnership will require that we do our work differently as we cope with an unprecedented worldwide event, and we look forward to acquiring the additional skills to meet the challenges that lie ahead. We appreciate your support as we meet each day with optimism that we will return to a normal operations before the end of this new school year. Sincerely, Teresa Hunter.
Okay, and how about Rialto School Managers Association, R S M A?
Uh, yes, we do. Uh, good evening, Board of Education Superintendent Dr. Avila, Innovation Team, and viewing audience. I am Angela Brantley, President of Rialto School Managers Association. R S M A would like to officially welcome all Rialto Unified School District members to the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one academic school year. This year marks a critical juncture in the history of our district as our school doors will open through a virtual setting. The time, attention, and effort given by all district employees have been, have made for a successful transition to start, to the start of this school year. Rialto teacher, staff, and administrators will make the best of this opportunity to ensure a high grade of academic instruction is delivered through a supportive platform in the Bridge Academy Model of Learning. Together with parents, students, and the Rialto community, we will maximize this opportunity and transform this educational experience to benefit our students. We also want to honor the Rialto School Manager, Managers, Associate, uh, Managers who served in the capacity as essential workers during our COVID nineteen school closure. Amid the uncertainty of the virus and fears that surrounded this pandemic, our managers were steadfast in their commitment and continue to provide in-person support to both our students and families. Please join us in thanking the following departments, Nutrition Services, Fiscal, Maintenance and Operations, Personnel Services, Information Technology, the Registration Center, and our school site administrators. They all exemplified, uh, heroism. To continue on this note of highlighting managers who worked during the COVID nineteen school closures, R S M A will be the twenty twenty, twenty twenty academic year by honoring the following individuals. Beth Ann Scantleberry, Chief Technology Officer, has been selected past the Classified Manager of the Year as she assured the necessary technology was received by all schools to guarantee an uninterrupted educational access for all students. It is even more imperative today to have a person like Beth Ann on our management team as she was able to give us the technology support needed to continue academic excellence and open the lines of, open the lines of digital communication with our school community. And Elizabeth Curtis, Lead Academic Agent, Interdisciplinary Studies and Humanities, has been selected as the Certificated Manager of the Year. Mrs. Curtis served in the capacity as the district's interim lead innovation agent during the spring of the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. She has been brought, she has brought innovative and successful plans for new, for the New Bridge Academy and secured avenues to assure academics are in the hands and minds of our students. These two ladies will receive a R S M A recognition certificate and a ten dollar gift card for their dedication. Congratulations, uh, to you both. Lastly, we would like to leave one final thought to our listening audience as we continue to work through the demands of this uncharted territory. Let us continue to operate in the spirit of servitude and teamwork to catapult our students and staff into an amazing and outstanding year. Leading through service, Rialto School Managers Association Board.
Okay, and now it's time for comments from the superintendent.
And thank you, Madam President, and I'll be brief. I just want to thank all of the staff that has worked so hard over the past, uh, two, three months in preparation for the opening of the school year, and especially for the last week as we continue to, uh, do everything that we needed to, to have a successful opening of this new type of school year. And I want to thank the, the parents, the families that have been, uh, more than patient, uh, with us, uh, as a district as we continue to work collaborat- collaboratively with them to ensure that they have the needed, uh, technologies, materials, and supplies and information in order to ensure participation of, of their students. And so I just, uh, I, I can't thank everyone enough for, uh, what I would consider a very successful opening of the school year. We did have a number of calls at the very beginning, the first day of school. Believe Google, uh, classrooms, uh, experienced some, uh, shutdown, uh, Sunday evening, but were able to correct it, uh, by eight o'clock, uh, the next day. But outside of that, we've been, uh, answering, uh, the call. And this is classified staff in the, uh, at the school sites, at the district office, the various departments, uh, certificated staff and managers, uh, the I T department has just been phenomenal in making sure that, uh, we respond to all of the, uh, issues, concerns, questions, uh, that families and sites have had uh, during the first three days of this, uh, new school year. Uh, but overall, it has been, uh, an amazing start. I visited a number of schools, uh, this week. And I was really, really happy, especially when I visited, uh, Cordiaq Elementary School and was able to see some direct, uh, online instruction. Uh, teachers were very excited, had created a very high, uh, enthusiasm and spirit, uh, among their classrooms. And there were, from what I was told, there were twenty of the twenty-three teachers, uh, were teaching from their classroom at Cordiaq, which was amazing to, to see. And just the, uh, again, the delivery of customer service that I was also able to see at Preston Elementary and over at Casey Elementary School, uh, was just something that, uh, made me very proud uh, to see that our staff was going above and beyond, uh, the call of duty. So just want to thank everybody for doing everything that they've done so far to make this a, a great opening of the school year.
Okay. We're gonna move on to comments from the Board of Education. Mr. Ayala?
Well, thank you, President O'Kelly. Uh, just want to remind everybody who's listening that we still have, uh, a sixteen million dollar deficit. And, uh, let's not waste our resources. Let's stay focused on, uh, on the resources that we have. Uh, if we manage them correctly, we can continue to move forward with all the staff that we have, certificated and classified, and those in between. Now, hiring new people may not be the best thing to do. I know sometimes it's necessary, but maybe a moratorium at this point would be smart and work with what we have. Uh, I want to point out at a time like this, which is, um, unprecedented, uh, these, these staff members, uh, will find it very difficult to find jobs if released. So it pains me, uh, to think that we don't have a plan in effect. I, I'm saying this because I, I want to be proactive as much as I can to let everybody know that these are the people on the front lines that, that teach our children and help them. Once released, then the ratios go up and it's even more difficult to help those kids. So, you know, we've got to take care of those who teach and those who support in order to keep moving in a positive direction. I know these are tough times, but I want to stay focused in that area. That's what I have to say tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ayala. Uh, Mr. Montes, comments?
Thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. I don't have a whole lot. I just want to welcome everybody back to school, uh, bittersweet, uh, back to school. Uh, I've been hearing from a lot of parents and family in regards to, uh, the distance learning. Some people are actually embracing it. Some people are, um, learning to, to, uh, adapt to it and others just, uh, you know, are, are very doubtful of its effectiveness. But regardless, uh, safety continues to be our number one priority. And I believe that we're doing the best that we can to protect as many people as possible. Uh, I just hope that, uh, parents and students and, and staff, uh, can continue to be patient and continue to work at, uh, adapting ourselves to our current situation. Uh, with that, uh, welcome back, uh, staff, parents, and students, and we'll continue to work hard for, uh, for the best interest of everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Montes. Mr. Martinez?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I just wanted to echo the positive, um, aspect that everyone has portrayed. I want to thank every staff, family member here for, um, really going beyond what, what is their norm and what is expected because they're helping not only families but other staff members. They're, they're working harder than, than they've been accustomed to, uh, than they, they really should be expected to. They, they're working harder than that, and that is exemplary. Um, I'm looking at, uh, U S D A Nutrition, um, the feed online, and, uh, our nutrition service people are being recognized by the U S D A Nutrition Services again. Um, so it's posted, uh, on the R U S D, Rialto U S D Child Nutrition on their feed, on my feed. I've seen it on the district feed, so, so many positive things going on. Um, as to the education, the online, I personally didn't expect this to, to come for another eight years. Uh, that was in my foresight. It got pushed upon us, pushed upon the world, and, you know, we're, we're working through all the glitches. Um, it is surprisingly positive. It is, um, rewarding to see that, that even in the worst of times, Rialto is pulling together. Normal, but that's not news. That's the norm for Rialto. Kudos to everyone. Um, it is the wave of the future, the education of the future. You'll have the choice to do this in another ten or twenty years. It is where education is going as an option. So we're just, uh, having to test it out prematurely. Again, kudos to everyone. Back to you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Uh, Vice President Walker, comments?
Uh, yes, I'd just like to say, you know, again, thank you for the staff and, uh, everybody who has made our opening relatively seamless. No, no news stories or anything like that. Um, my daughter actually came home, well, came home, she was already home, uh, came out of the room. I'm excited about her birthday. So, I mean, she was smiling and everything like that, so, you know, even the first day was exciting for them, I guess, just to connect back. So thank you for the teachers who, you know, we need to get some comprehensive, uh, planning and support, um, to enjoy the children. So I've been hearing different, even on a, I have a community parent meeting on Tuesday nights, and I heard some, uh, information from them. Um, so just excited about this opportunity. Though it's not what we had been looking for our, our students, but, um, we're definitely trying to make the best of it. And, and I, and again, I've seen where some of the, clearly some of the teachers have really done some outstanding job that bridging this gap between, you know, being able to be physically there. So just excited. So thank you, uh, Dr. Avila, for all the support, um, that you've given our staff to be able to do this all across the district. Uh, and I just looking forward to, you know, some of those things that are, you know, really gonna happen out of this as it's, you know, what is it, um, uh, what is the, the, the saying about, uh, something about is the mother, necessity is the mother of invention. Uh, right. That may come out of this, uh, distance learning. So just excited about it. Um, but keeping in mind that we, you know, we want to make sure that everybody is still safe, uh, for those who just still have to interact with people outside of their own family. Um, the district is doing as much as we can to make sure that we're all safe and, and for all of you all, continue to be safe out there so that we don't have, um, a spike. And we'd love to see you again when we can, all in person. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. And that leaves me. And, you know, I've just been, uh, I'm so intrigued in what I've had, the excitement I see from teachers and students uh, about this, uh, school year and having, uh, the situation we are in. I want to give a shout out to all of our hardworking teachers in the district. Despite the challenges of distance learning and doing something completely different than you're used to, you are doing an amazing job. Your power, and for students and for teaching is obvious. Thank you for all of your hard work and the effort you are making to ensure that distance learning will work. Know that you are making a difference every day. Teachers make the world a better place. I want to share one of my favorite quotes with you, and it says, "The fact that you worry about being a good teacher means that you already are one." So keep that in mind. I also want to give a shout out to our wonderful students. This has not been our typical back-to-school beginning of the year, but these are not normal times. Make sure you are involved in your distance learning. Every day, learn all that you can. You are resilient and you will adapt to the changes in your schooling. Your teachers miss you and can't wait until they can be back in the classroom with you. But most of all, we all want every one of our teachers, staff, and students to stay safe. Uh, thank you, and that's all I have. Okay, so now the next thing on the agenda is public hearing. Can I have a motion to open public hearing? So move, hello? I'm sorry, who made the motion? Walker? Walker and Mr. Montes? All right, vote by board members to open public hearing, uh, by not be read the item first. Uh, Form for Public Disclosure of Proposed Collective Bargaining Agreement, A B one, two, zero, zero. Public hearing, pursuant to the requirements of government code and board policy, the Form for Public Disclosure of Proposed Collective Bargaining Agreement, A B, what, twelve hundred, statutes of nineteen ninety-one, chapter one, two, one, three, as revised by A B two, seven, five, six, statutes of oh four, chapter twenty-five, government code three, five, four, seven, point five, between the Rialto Education Association, R E A, and the Rialto Unified School District Board of Education is hereby supposed to comply with the legislative requirements for public voting. Um, so now we do the individual vote by board members to open public hearing. For me, it's aye. Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay, so public hearing is opened at seven thirty-two P M. And do we have any comments on public hearing by Dr. Avila?
We do not.
Okay. In that case, can I have a motion to close public hearing? So move, Walker? Okay, Walker, oh, okay, I have you for the motion, so we'll put Mr. Martinez for the seconds since I couldn't tell which one was coming in first. Vote by board members to close public hearing. For me, it's an aye. Ms. Walker?
Walker? Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay, we are closing public hearing at seven thirty-three P M. Uh, the next side, public information, William, legislation, quarterly uniform complaint report summary for April, June, uh, twenty twenty. I guess that's if it doesn't say where it's available in the agenda, but it usually is. Um, but that's just for information. Move on to the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar will be acted upon in one motion unless pulled by Board of Education members or the superintendent for individual action. Can I have a motion to approve the consent calendar? Motion to, okay, okay, who was first?
Lady first.
Ladies first, okay.
I'll second it, Montes.
Okay. And there's just one thing, I have a comment I want to make on E four point four. So, that one is a pull, I guess. Uh, so can I have a mo- a, a vote to approve the consent calendar except for a comment on E four point four?
Martinez, motion to approve, as amended.
Okay. And, uh, second? Walker? Okay. All right. For me, it's an aye, Ms. Walker.
Walton, aye?
Aye, Mar- Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay. And then four point, E four point four. I just wanted to make a statement.
You gotta yell at here.
Oh, God, how did I miss you?
That's okay.
Okay. Ms. Ayala?
Aye.
It's an aye, right? Okay.
Yep.
Uh, four point four is Agreement with Explorer Learning Gizmos. And, uh, as a former high school person, I got very excited when I saw this item because it's a great, uh, purchase for our high school science classes. At least twenty percent of high school science courses must be designated as labs to meet the rigor of the U C C S U requirements. Well, obviously, we're not even holding a class, so there's nowhere to have a lab. These, uh, the Explorer Learning Gizmos, uh, program allows students to conduct virtual labs and simulations while maintaining student safety. And in doing so, they allow for maximum student engagement, which the kids certainly need, especially when they're doing everything online. So, I just wanted to say I'm, I'm, I'm very excited about that. All right. The next, uh, next section is, uh, Discussion Action Items. The first one is Agreement with Apex Learning Incorporated. Um, the item is Approving Agreement with Apex Learning for Unlimited Licenses at the Secondary Level and for any high school and middle school student effective August fifteenth, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one at a cost not to exceed a hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-three dollars and to be paid from the general fund. Can I have a motion to approve this item?
Martinez?
Can I have a second?
Walker, second?
Okay. And we'll do an individual vote by board members. Apex, Apex is the, uh, one of the big reasons it's used is, uh, credit recovery. So, it's a very essential program for us. I vote aye, Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
As much as I hate to spend money, aye.
Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay. The next item is Agreement with Curriculum Associates for I-Ready, uh, Instruction. Approving Agreement with Curriculum Associates for the Math and E L A I-Ready Instruction Program at seventeen elementary schools and five middle schools, effective August thirteenth, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, at an average cost of ten thousand dollars per site. A total cost not to exceed two hundred forty thousand, two hundred forty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents and to be paid from the general fund and Site Title One Fund. All right. Can I have a motion to approve this item?
Martinez?
Can I have a second?
Walker, second?
All right. Individual vote by board members. For me, it is aye, Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
I'm gonna say aye on this one.
All right. And Mr. Montes? Mr. M- Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay. All right. The next, right, uh, thing, I mean, I'm sorry, the next item is the forty-five day budget revision. Approved Budget Revisions for Changes in Revenues in Order to Meet the Forty-five Day Revision Requirements for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty to Twenty Twenty-One, Per Education Code Section Four Two One Two Seven Eight. Is there a motion to approve this item? Can I have a second? Okay. Individual vote by board members. For me, it is aye, Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Nay.
Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Next item, Approve the Purchase of Workspace One Software. The item reads, Ratify the Approval for the Purchase of Six Thousand Annual Software Licenses of Workspace One, Effective July fifteenth, twenty twenty through July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, at a cost not to exceed sixty-four thousand, two hundred dollars to be paid from the general fund. Uh, can I have a motion to approve this item?
Martinez?
And a second? All right. Individual vote by, I, I got you, Dina. Uh, individual vo- vote by board members. For me, it's aye. For Ms. Walker?
Aye, Walton.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
There goes another teacher down the tubes. Nay.
Mr. Montes? The next item is the tentative settlement, uh, between Rialto Unified School District, uh, and the Rialto Education Association. Says ratify the tentative settlement agreement between the Rialto Unified School District and the Rialto Education Association, R E A. That's all, like, the last item in the agenda. It's several pages long, but, uh, hopefully, everybody looked over it and understands, uh, what it's saying. Should I have a motion to approve this item?
Martinez?
Can I have a second?
Montes.
Okay. All right. And so now we're gonna do an individual vote by board members. For me, it's an aye. How about Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
I will say this with a qualification. If the percentage cuts were there, we wouldn't even have these discussions about pay cuts or, or, excuse me, of, of, of cutting out programs. But we, if we don't cut out programs, in order not to lose jobs, we have to, uh, we have to take a pay cut across the board to, to balance the equation. So, therefore, it's a nay.
Well, this is to agree with the, uh, the-
That's right. That's right.
-settlement between the, the union and the school district.
That's right. It's a nay.
Okay. It's a nay. All right. Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay. And the last item is reinstatement of expulsions. Um, that, there was, uh, you know, a page sent to us on, as part of the board meeting agenda. There were three cases. Each of the students has met all of the requirements of their rehabilitation plan. So, can I have a motion to approve of this item?
Martinez?
And a second?
Second, Walker? Second?
Okay. Vote by board members. For me, it's an aye. Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
Mr. Montes?
Aye.
Okay. Last item is adjournment. It says, "The next regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Rialto Unified School District will be held on August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty, at seven o'clock P M, telephonically and via, via streamlined audio only. Materials distributed or presented to the Board of Education at the board meeting are available upon request from the Superintendent's office." Can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? So, move? And the second?
Second with discussion?
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Montes.
Yes, um, if, um, if, uh, if I may, uh, with the permission of the board, uh, just end tonight's meeting, you know, in honor, uh, and in loving memory of my uncle, who just passed away this Thursday, uh, from his battle with, with, uh, COVID-nineteen in Lake Havasu, Lake Havasu, Arizona. Uh, twenty-six-year, uh, resident of, uh, Lake Havasu, uh, uh, my aunt, um, my dad's sister and, and, uh, and my uncle, her husband, lived, uh, and had five, four children in, in Los Angeles and moved out in the early nineties to Lake Havasu. Been living in Lake Havasu, Arizona since the early nineties. Uh, my uncle, uh, did, uh, soccer coaching, worked, uh, uh, on the, on and around the lake there in Lake Havasu, uh, you know, for over twenty years. Lovely place and, um, unfortunately, uh, he's one of the many victims that, uh, little by little, more and more of us are starting to realize how this pandemic is starting to affect us, either directly or indirectly. So, in his honor, um, and just, uh, I'd like to, uh, send a prayer, uh, thoughts and prayers to my aunt, my cousins and, and the rest of our family during this difficult time. Um, and with that, uh, thank you, Ms. O'Kelly. Let's continue to be safe.
Uh, would you like to say his name so we can-
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, uh, his name, yeah, yeah, his name is Rodolfo Rudy Ochoa. Uh, my aunt, um, survived by my aunt, my dad's sister, uh, Yidora, uh, Ochoa, uh, my cousin, uh, Hirega, my cousin, um, uh, Eilin, uh, Dorita and, uh, little Rudy. And, um, I believe they have, uh, eleven grandchildren. Uh, it's unfortunate. My uncle was fifty-eight years old. Um, he was nicknamed, nicknamed Flaco in the family, uh, which mean, which means skinny or, uh, or thin. And, um, uh, he seemed very healthy, didn't seem like, uh, he would be, uh, you know, typical, uh, symptom of what many people think COVID-nineteen would affect, uh, people that are either elderly or, uh, pre-existing, uh, health conditions. No, he was perfectly fine and unfortunately, this, you know, this, um, illness, uh, just, uh, you know, sweeping with many different people, many different walks of life. So, let's continue to be safe.
Exactly. Well, I'm very sorry to hear this and, uh, we already have a motion and a second, um, to adjourn the meeting and we would like to adjourn in the memory of Rudy Ochoa, who became yet another victim of COVID-nineteen and, uh, there's just too many of them, basically. Um, okay. Vote by board members to adjourn. For me, it's an aye, Ms. Walker?
Aye.
Mr. Martinez?
Aye.
Mr. Ayala?
Aye.
And Mr. Montes?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. And, uh, Mr. Montes, we are all so very sorry for your loss. It's devastating. Okay. Our meeting is adjourned at seven fifty P M.